Good evening, welcome to the Monday, August 5th City Council meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Santee.
Here.
Alderman Glenn.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderwoman Beany is absent. Alderman Mahavec.
Here.
Alderman Devine.
Here.
Alderwoman Miller.
Here.
Mayor Jott.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there anyone here this evening that would like to make a public comment that's an item that's not on the agenda this evening? See none? Moving on to the consent agenda, is there any items that you would like for separate consideration? See none? Looking for a motion to approve 5A through 5K. Alderwoman Miller.
So moved.
Second? Alderman Santee.
I will second the motion.
Please call the roll.
Alderwoman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Alderman Glenn.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderwoman, sorry, Alderman Mahavec.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Next item on the agenda is 6A.
See your board. Good job.
You really earned that today.
We'll tell them it's tough.
Five minutes, thirty.
Agenda is 6A for ethics issues. David, you want to go ahead and present?
Yeah, so this, I sent everybody a letter, hopefully you all got it, with a lot of attachments. It's bigger than it really is. I mean, it looks larger than it really is. But it's one that's in front of us and we need to deal with it. So, just generally to summarize again what's in the letter, earlier in the spring, we had an ethics issue raised. Everyone took note, including the newspapers, that the city of McHenry and many other cities didn't have their ethics ordinance quite up to speed. Everyone has gift ban ordinances and prohibited political activities ordinances. It indicates what the law is and what the, you know, where the line's drawn. But there was not a procedural mechanism incorporated inside our ordinance to set up that commission organization and the and the hearing officer, much like a police commission or a liquor commission, things like that, that are normally done. We've never had an ethics complaint that had required a hearing, which is probably why it's dragged along in all towns, including McHenry. So then, right after that, immediately after that, we contacted the state's attorney, both the mayor and I, and we talked this through. And the state's attorney, coincidentally, had been in the middle of drafting its own ethics amendments, which included this ethics commission and an ethics officer to conduct the hearings. And between the three of us and the county board chairman, we all agreed that maybe it would be best for the county state's attorney to include in that county ordinance a provision for cities to join in that procedure to try and cut down on the labor force to conduct these hearings and have one overseeing body do it. So they said, okay, that's a good idea. So they spent the summer finishing whatever they were working on and so forth. And it went to the county board last month, end of last month. And we realize now that they did, they do have a draft. It's going for vote at the end of August or the beginning of September with the county board. And it's a fine ordinance, sets up the commission and the officer and so forth. But its bars are different than the law require our bars to be. Our bars require two things, and it requires prohibited political activities and gift bans to be handled by the ethics commission and the ethics officer, no more, no less. The county goes on and creates additional ethics requirements that are outside those parameters. And so, in all the meantime, on July 7th, we have an actual complaint pending with the city that's not getting addressed. So, we can wait until the county adopts its ordinance, bring it to you, explain it to you, draft the intergovernmental agreement if you want to go that direction. I'm afraid we're not going to get to that till October and/or later. All the meantime, this guy's complaint is pending. Oh, I haven't even read yet, the ethics complaint. So I put before you the option of waiting for the county to enter into that intergovernmental agreement, evaluate it, and then vote on it sometime early fall this year. Or, we can move tonight. I put on action items for tonight to appoint the existing police commission members by name as the ethics commission. Then they'll be in place. And the ethics officer would be Brandy Quantz from my office. To give you background on Brandy Quantz, we hired her a few months ago from the county state's attorney's office. She's been with them for eight or nine years, and before that, she was in private practice with a guy named Bill Franz in his municipal practice that he had. So she's experienced in the area, which is why we picked her up. But more importantly, in this regard, she was actually involved with the drafting of the county's ethics ordinance. She's the one who pretty much wrote the letter that I sent you. I couldn't have written that. And so she's qualified to be the hearing officer, and I think she's objective enough to do it. So I was recommending you appoint her as well as being the ethics officer and conduct this hearing as anticipated by the legislature. We have the procedures in place, we just need the people. Once you have the people, we'll set this person's hearing, coordinate it with them so it's convenient, and we'll get it done. And then, when we have time, you can decide whether you want to go with the county later and we'll change it, or do you like the way this is set up and we'll stay with it. Either way works. So, those are your alternatives. If you just give me the direction, I'll give you the proposed motion, even if it's to table the matter and it'll deal with the county. We'll do that.
Discussion on this item. Alderman.
Just a question to the attorney, not to put you on the spot, but what do you prefer legally, what you think we should do?
Well, we haven't heard much from the person who filed the complaint, but if I was him, I'd be saying, what's going on here? I think we need to move on the complaint. I don't know that the county's ordinance is going to be acceptable to the six or seven of you. You need to look at it because it affects you. You're the ones who are going to have complaints filed against you. It could be anyone else in the city, I suppose. I'm not quite sure how broad this would be based, but certainly against the elected officials, that's the point of it. So, you should read the county ordinance before you take action on it. And I don't think we should wait. I think this person deserves a hearing. And the fact that we're setting up the commission and we set up the hearing officer, that's what the legislature told us to do. The whole point of going to the county is we said, well, maybe it's more objective. Maybe these election hearings shouldn't be done before us either, Jack, we said. And Jack agreed. Maybe we should have a county board conduct the local election official hearings every two years when we have these so it doesn't look so awkward when, you know, the alderman's standing in front of us who's on the board, and the one who wants to be on the board is standing in front of us, and the mayor's making the decision with the board, with the clerk and whoever the third person is. It's, but that's the way the legislature, you know, set it up, and that's the way this one is set up. So, my recommendation is to conduct a hearing and get it over with. Give the guy a hearing.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yeah, I just had a question too. I was questioning if we decided to do this and then go move with the county's side of it, do we need to still have a separate commission ourselves? Because that, to me, seems to make it somewhat political too, that we have a commission of people who are already involved with us.
No, that would be an alternative. You would not set up your own commission. You would sign an intergovernmental agreement accepting their commission. That would be your appointment.
Okay.
Through that IGA.
That's why I think you're, I guess it would be, go with part B, mine personally, where we do this now and if we decide to move to the
And change it.
To theirs when they get it, whether it's October or next year, you know, we review that and see how it is.
And I'll bring it back to you as soon as it's done by the county.
Alderman.
Yeah, just the, all right, the commissioners that we would appoint, then this appointment would be until the city council makes a recommendation or a decision on whether we go county or locally or
Yeah, it's indefinite. If we would adopt the county's ordinance, we would repeal their appointments.
Okay. So it's not for a specific time or anything?
Okay.
Well, actually, it would end with the mayor's term if we don't say anything.
Right.
Their appointment. Actually, they're nice enough to take it. Police chief contacted each one of them because they were adding a burden. Remember, they're your police commissioners. I thought that was a fair choice of people without bringing new people into the situation.
Any other questions?
Alderman. No, I'm agreeable with having our advisory committee right now, ethics committee. And then, as long as, once the county is finished, which you're thinking it's law.
Yeah, so it'll be in the next three weeks.
Oh, okay, then you'll be able to present that to us and probably go over the pros and cons about it once you feel
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Schaefer.
So Attorney McCarthy, what would that motion be if we
You have, it's the number one and two under A, in that order. Or you could take one and two and do them together, actually.
Page?
The agenda.
It's the agenda.
Oh. So it's page one, the letter you sent us.
It's number 6A, one and two.
That's written on the agenda too.
I can't help you with that.
Starts on page sixty-four.
Well, I'd like, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is it, are you asking for a motion yet?
Yeah.
You want to read it?
Yeah, you want, you want
I'm ready to make the motion is all I'm saying.
David, how would you?
Okay, so it's a motion in accordance with the agenda to appoint Brandy Quantz, QUA and CE, as a city ethics advisory, and the appointment of Dr. Michael Roberts, Richard Huber, and John Jones as the city's ethics commissioners. Until further order of the city commission, I mean, the city council.
Alderman Miller.
I'll second.
Yeah, any other questions, comments? Jeff Schaefer.
Thank you.
Sorry. Any other questions, comments? Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none? Clerk, please call the roll.
Okay, Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderwoman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavec.
Yes.
Alderman Glenn.
Yes.
Alderman Santee.
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, I'll follow this up with the person who filed the complaint, explain everything to them, and we'll get going.
Next item on the agenda is 6B, motion to approve or deny a Class F full-service personal care establishment liquor license to Valerie Salon located at thirty-four oh seven West Elm Street, McHenry. I'd like to open up the discussion by council regarding this item. I see none. Val, would you like to step up and state your name and address for public record, please?
Valerie Ziegel, twenty-nine sixteen, came at Abidun, McHenry. For a correction, it's thirty-four oh two West Elm. And as far as I can tell, what I read in the ordinance for the Class F liquor license, I just want to clarify, that is not be able to sell to my clients, correct?
It's to give it away. Well, right, that wasn't the focus of it, it reads to give it away. Free.
Okay, and then I would just like to ask, since I sent each and every one of you a letter explaining mostly the cons to that, not one person contacted me. Do you have anything to say about that?
Go ahead, Alderman Schaefer.
I contacted you on the first one, and that letter that you sent out, and the second one had no changes after we had made the changes here at the council level, so that's why I didn't respond to it.
And that one person from this council, except Mr. Santee, even cared to come and see our place?
I go by it every day, I live a block away.
So you can't stop in?
I didn't think it was open. I saw your husband out working in the driveway, I didn't want to come in the building.
Well, you're all invited to stop by. I would just like to say that I'm disappointed. I would like the license that you're offering, but it's not good for business. And I'll continue to ask. Do you have any questions for me?
Council? Alderman Miller?
Val, I don't have your letter. Where did you send it to?
I sent it to every single one of your, when you contact on your website, from the city of McHenry, and click on your name.
Monty, I didn't get that. Can you check on that?
I didn't, I didn't get it. I didn't get it either.
I would, I would check, just, I sent the note out to check your trash or junk file because I also received two other notes in there, so I don't know if the new security stuff we have throws things in there, but there are several that are in there, so I'm
I'm confused, is this about selling? You want to sell it instead of giving it away?
I always wanted to sell it, that's the application I applied for.
This was not a big part of this ordinance, to give it away as opposed to sell it. I don't know where this is coming from, this is the first I'm hearing about it.
What do you mean?
I'm telling you, the way it's written is the way it was spoken. If you want to sell it, we can change the word to sell.
I would love that.
I didn't know that that was, I thought, I thought we talked about that it was part of the
Package.
Package. That, you know, you have your hair or whatever you, I'm not sure what you do, whatever you do is part of that fee is, you know, a complimentary glass or whatever. That's not what we talked about?
Not while I was in the room.
So did you want to sell drinks separately from the other services? That's a, that's a big difference.
That's been the whole thing, right?
Yeah, that's a big difference than what you're talking about, to sell the, to sell the, you set part of the package, which, so if you go in for a service, your two drinks are included in your package price.
Well, I understand, so she, now it's a package plus you have to pay for the two drinks, right?
Well, she wants to be able to sell drinks separately with a separate menu of drink items.
Right, because people, like this weekend, when Mr. Santee was there, there was a man there waiting for hours for his wife. He just sat there in the sun, he could have totally had a beer.
So his wife was paying, give him a beer.
So here's, here's what I'm saying, ethically, we're skirting all the issues, and I don't appreciate that. Because if you are wanting to give away liquor, I'm not going to give it away in a paper cup. If I give it away in a glass cup, now the health department's involved. Ethically, that is my responsibility, I don't just do it under the table. If the health department's involved, I have to get a commercial dishwasher, which is what my letter said, which is $2,000. I can rent it for $150 a month. Or I can get a three-sink washer installed by a plumber, et cetera, et cetera, all to give away a free drink. Why would I do that? I won't do that. I mean, I want to do it right. I want to provide healthy glasses for my clients and treat them special.
So I'm confused now, with a liquor license, you have to follow the health
Yes.
You do have to follow it anyway, so
Yes.
So you're going to get that.
But she was making
I'm not going to get that.
You'd be making more money to offset the cost of a commercial
Right, I can't give it away and follow the health department, plus pay for the health department, plus pay for the city thing. I mean, all of this, and I don't want gambling. I just want to be able to sell my clients very strongly. It's so simple.
But we can't, we can't have one without the other. If you get a liquor license, you can have gaming.
No, we change that. So it's a separate consideration now.
We can, the state still allows it, I don't know.
And in my letter, I said, excuse me, if you would just try me, I mean, you have the power. You all voted no, you could all vote yes, and you could take it away from me anytime you wanted to.
I feel like I'm in the Twilight Zone, I don't know what we're doing here. I've never heard any of this before tonight.
I didn't know this was an honest initiative, I don't have an email either, so
Yeah, we, we, this whole health department thing has to come up after we last met, right?
Well, I already have the health department involved in certain services that I do. So they, they already come to my establishment, so I can't have wine on the shelves and then they walk in and go, what's this? I have to be above board.
Yeah, nobody's asked me not to be, but I
Well, it kind of is when you say, just give it away, you can't sell it, but put it in with your services.
No, 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 wait, 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 I wrote this. I personally wrote this with the chief, and we wrote what we were talking about. Nobody put in giveaway because the city wanted you to give it away. I'm telling you, that's what we talked about. Now, if we want to change it, we can change it. We vote on it. I don't know if we should do that tonight, but one thing I will tell you is I don't think the state cares. We contacted the state and the state doesn't participate in the issuance of these type of licenses or the BYOB licenses. They let the local entities take care of itself. So I think we're good from that standpoint. It's just what everybody
But now this is going to be a regular liquor license.
Well, so it would have to be, sorry, so we have a Class A, remember, that is a full bar license, which includes either bars or a restaurant that has a bar. And then you have a B, which is table service, C, which is packaged, and then the E is the special event, and then this one is the F. And I think the original intent of this, with this specific business aside, was that we know that this stuff is probably happening anyway, and so that provides us an opportunity to, you know, to regulate it, yes, or at least be a part of it. But obviously, this request is totally different, so
But wait, wait, I don't think she's requesting a full license.
That's what I'm saying, though.
You're still requesting the personal service in all other respects, you just want to sell it instead of give it away. I think that still stays within the parameters here, do you agree, Jim?
No, I think it's the exact opposite. The personal care and, Val, the research that we did, when we looked at this, we looked at what is going on when it comes to personal care establishments, and that's exactly what it was, was they were offering two drinks, a maximum of two drinks per client as a free benefit for coming to get their packages. So when we came to council on June seventeenth, that's the discussion that I had with council
Right.
Was, what do you guys want us to do? Are you interested in this type of a license? The council unanimously said, yes, we are interested in this type of license. So we went and then drafted one and brought it back to you. Maybe it was June seventeenth we brought it back, and the discussion was a little bit before that, I apologize if I don't remember.
And you're right, this is the way other times go.
But we only have two classifications of licenses right now that are considered serve or pour licenses. That's table service and that's full bar. So you would have to create an additional classification of a liquor license that allows you to pour and serve alcohol, is what you're talking about, which would be different than this personal care establishment license. We've already had some other businesses, I believe, reach out to the city interested in, potentially in the future, applying for this exact license that we have right now. Not to sell it, but to be able to offer it as part of the service package. So I, from my, from the police department's perspective, we would have to, we'd have to come up with another liquor license that met that criteria. Council would have to want that.
Originally, my application was for full liquor license. And the application says, do you want gaming? I said, no, excuse me. And Monty called me when he was putting the agenda together and said, because somebody must have got my letter, I hear now you don't want this license, the one that you're offering. I said, well, I want something, so keep me on for tonight.
Right, and so based on definitions, again, of a Class A or Class B, she would not be eligible for either of those two licenses, like other businesses that we've talked about. And so, it's either created a different liquor license, like the chief said, that allows non-bar restaurant businesses to apply for a liquor license to be able to sell it or serve it or not. And again, when you go to, I'm just going to be upfront and honest and straightforward with council that as soon as you do that, now you get into the consideration of video gaming applicat, again, not your business, but video gaming requests for every one of those businesses for that other class of license. If you call it a Class G or whatever, now they're pouring and serving and are technically eligible for video gaming, so you're going to have to make decisions on those for every one of those applicants.
And that's why I thought after our last discussion and all the chief's work and your work, that we came up with that new classification, and it satisfied all of those things that we were having issues with. So, that's why I thought this was a done deal myself, but what are you suggesting?
Well, Val can't make this work because of her overhead costs. Now, we're clearly hearing, so we either go back and do some brain work to try and, your home rule, all right? This is a local issue, this is why home rule exists, so that you can carve out, without being discriminatory, without being arbitrary, a way to deal with this issue. And if we can't do it, we can't do it. But if we can, and you tell us to do it, we'll go back to the drawing board and try and work something out. But this license isn't working for her because of the cost. So, we need direction.
The other question too, is there, you do, according to your website, you have tattoo services. And I know the health department, those two things don't mix so out. How do you get by with that?
They're in separate areas. And the health department will let clients bring in their drinks. I can't bring a drink in. It's the worker can't bring a drink in, but the clients can bring in whatever they want in that area.
Is that
Well, not alcohol.
Not, you've got to bring your own alcohol.
Right, right, but I mean, they can bring whatever it is, like if they came from Abidun, they can bring that in the room. I cannot.
But not alcohol, correct?
Well, I don't have that license.
Yeah, but I mean, we've talked about the places that do it now that are, we thought was okay, but it is, they're not under the law. You're supposed to do that either. Sorry.
Anyone else have any input? Alderman Santee?
Yeah, I, we had conversations, and I know, and to be honest with you, I'm still a little bit confused here. I would think that, I don't think we're solving anything tonight with what's in front of us. So we should, whatever you feel is best way, just to table it, Dave, until we can review it and make sure
Right, but we could still use direction from the city as to, so we don't
Spin our wheels.
Right, if you want to try and accommodate Val, then we'll do that, and we'll see if we can do it lawfully and so forth and make it work. We just need direction on whether that's the intent.
Okay, and I was, I guess I was front row and center in regards to, yes, I experienced a very nice atmosphere there and noticed that some ladies were getting whatever nails, hair done. And the gentleman was sitting outside, just kind of, I mean, relaxing, but just could have offered him something or if he wanted to purchase it at some point in the near future. That's what she expressed to me at that time, and I was thinking that, okay, that's something that will be available to her. And, you know, this discussion is not giving her that avenue. And, yeah, I'd like to see a sit-down and make sure that we're all on the same page because I hear the chief's concerns, and I had some concerns before this meeting, speaking with the administrator in regards to what, whatever letter it is, how do we, we're home rule, how do we get this done? If we can get, if you think, if you feeling, you know, legally, we can get this done, let's just sit down and put our heads together.
That's right, but, you know, what Derek brought up was there's other businesses, fascinating, we know was interested in it, perhaps still interested. But the scenario he raised was the same type of scenario where a person comes in, they drop their car off, and he waits for four hours, I don't know why anybody would do that, but they wait for four hours for their car to be cleaned, and what are they going to do? They want to game, replace it, she doesn't want to game, so they'll have drinks, whatever. Those two are getting closer aligned because we're moving from free, free or package pricing versus sale pricing. So we have to work that through and see how that all goes together and see what we can accomplish.
And the licenses we have now on A and B provide us the opportunity at a staff level to say, you're not eligible for a Class A or Class B liquor license, so you can't apply or
Because eating and drinking's not your business.
Right, exactly. And so that makes it straightforward, and council doesn't have to worry about liquor licenses, video gaming and all that. Now you create a Class G or whatever it is, it allows any business to apply for a liquor license, and you're right back to where we were before we started the conversation about video gaming. And that is, you have to say yes or no to that specific business, and you open it up to everybody to have the opportunity for a liquor license. And so, we've gone from clearly defining it to not defining it again.
Chief, did you have something?
Uh, I, I would just ask respectfully, we did, we did clarify this back in, you know, between the May and the June discussions. And so, staff worked very hard to try to, to clarify this and, and make it very clear for everybody. If we are going a different direction, I just would ask that at least we see that the majority of council wants us to do this. Because I have found no other city that offers a liquor license for what you're asking for. All I have found is these personal care establishments where you can provide a couple of drinks, you know. And we have a little leeway because we're home rule for, you know, make it two drinks or make it three drinks. Ogbon only allows eight ounce beers. We upped ours to twelve ounce beers. But I have never found it where somebody that's not a bar or not a bar and restaurant combination is actually serving alcohol. I can't find a liquor license in the state of Illinois in a municipality. Now, there might be one out there. I have searched, not everywhere. And I think that there's, there's, there is a level of importance when it comes to safety in your community to have some level of regulation on what type of businesses are responsible enough to sell alcohol.
I would just like to say whether I give them two or sell them two, it's two.
But we don't have a way to regulate, we can't give you a liquor license. We couldn't say, we also have to define, the hours are different for a personal care establishment. Full bars allow us to stay open till one or two o'clock in the morning depending on the days. The personal care is specifically designed for personal care salons and, and establishments. That's really what it was designed for.
And, and I don't know anything legally, but it seems that everything is fine with what you wrote. Like, the hours were in there. I read that. Everything was fine except the free. Like, if it's two, make it be two. I mean, I don't know how you regulate if I'm going to give two free or two paid. Either way, it's the same way you're going to regulate it. I, I don't know how that is, but that.
Val really comes, Val really comes back to, again, your business. Obviously, you're investing in your business and you're going to stick up for that and all that, and you have your own situation. But for the city, it really comes down to how we deal with it from a broader aspect. That yours is the easy one because you're standing in front of us and we can have the conversation with you. But it opens, even creating a license that limits it to two or whatever it is, opens it up to all businesses. And that's, and that's where we get into the bigger rabbit hole.
Can't you just put limit ten businesses? Can I have this?
We, we kind of have that now with the other liquor licenses, but then we can say ten and then some, the eleventh can still come before council on request of license.
Alderman Schaefer?
The other wrinkle that we didn't know about was we were always under the impression that this was going to be for the customers. What you brought up tonight, we never discussed where a, a person who's just with another customer is in attendance. That, that wasn't part of our discussion anywhere. So, that's a different wrinkle altogether. Even though there are places right across the street from you that they could go to and do the exact same thing. So, that, I mean, we have to consider that, David, because we didn't talk about the non-customer. Because the other thing I was thinking about is you could, this could, you could be getting this tonight if you would have the twenty dollar package and the twenty-five dollar package with that two drink in there.
I get it. And if that's what you want me to do, I'll do it and I'll file another application and try to. It's, it's just not, I don't know that it's. I can totally do that. I just feel like we're trying to get something done, not the right way. That's all. And you know, you get nothing from that. The city gets nothing. I'm a service business. You get no taxes from me.
And the, the other thing which I'm not, I'm, I don't know if you're aware of too, but if you were ever to sell your business and they had a full liquor license, they then could get gaming, correct? It stays with the licensee and the business owner.
Well, right now, the way it's set up.
So, you can say you don't want it, but the next person who buys your business could do it. So, we have to think of that too. That's just another thing, so. Good, yeah.
So, from council's standpoint, I mean, where, where do all of you stand as far as you want, you want staff to go back and try to figure out if there's a, a business that has this type of license? Or are we looking to just not do that?
I actually like what we had because I thought it answered all of staff's questions to be able to talk to those people as those things came in and created a, a special license for all the, the salons and establishments that wanted to do this. But I'd be welcome to hear what everyone else has to say too.
I'll do that.
And I just think more than anything else, this is something that she brought up, is the fact that different costs bringing in the health department and everything else just kind of compounds the problem. I don't know. Is there a true way of doing it without committing ourselves totally for everything that accommodates her as well as probably other businesses out there that will be coming forward? And maybe that's what we do is we table it. We wait until there's some kind of resolution as far as how we kind of do the accommodation. It's the only thing that makes sense and, in other words, we approve it tonight, she's still got to go right with the health department and everything else.
Either way. Well, I don't know.
Either way, either way, if I'm going to give it away or not, there's going to be a lot of costs involved.
Just out of curiosity, if you do pla, if you do plastic, you don't. But if you do real glass, you do, correct? Is there, is there a happy medium for you to, as far as like the higher end? I know my wife, I know some, my wife has wine glasses that are plastic by the pool, you know, so they're, is there options for that? Where the washing is a requirement then?
Yeah, I could do that. Do I want to do that? No, that would be not a high-end salon. I mean, that's just the truth of it. And now I've got expense for all these plastic licenses.
Derek?
And again, so at, at the end of the day, it still comes down to, we could only have one class of liquor license. And council has the authority to tell anybody that comes before you yes or no for that liquor license. You know, we've gone down the path of trying to better define it so that you don't have that amount of liquor licenses or requests or that we can deal with things at a staff level. But if we go the other direction, it's, we can do it because it's home rule and you have the authority to say yes or no to anybody that applies. But just know that, that you'll have to make the decision yes or no to anybody that applies. And for that, let license in for the video gaming because chances are, most of them are going to ask for video gaming too.
So, that means someone gets a no and someone gets a yes.
Right.
It's very difficult when they're standing up here in front of you with a good business plan.
Right.
Any others?
So, we leave it the way it is?
Leave it the way, way it is? Alderman Haddock?
Yeah, I think we created the Class F to accommodate businesses like this. And I think we've gone about as far as we can go with regard to the way that is categorized and classified. So, in favor of leaving it just as it is.
Alderman?
And I would, that would be my comment, that we, we created this based on your ask. And we said, how do we accommodate not you, but a business similar to yours in a way that makes sense to enforcement, to regulation, and to make it right, which is why we've created Class F. Unfortunately, that brings other issues that you're dealing with and the standard that you want in your salon, which is really out of our control. I mean, it's, when we look at our liquor license, and you and I had a brief conversation, and I did not get your letter. I have just searched my entire little machine here, so I don't know where it went in cyberspace, but I apologize. You know, you, you aren't eligible for a full liquor license. So, I'm comfortable with the creation that we have and I would hope that you would work with this. And if it becomes really not your vision, then come back and ask for a full liquor license and, you know, let the cards roll as they roll there. I think those are going to be more difficult for us to make decisions on than something that's almost been suited for you. So, that's just my, my opinion.
Alderman Santi?
No, I, I do have to follow what Alderman Miller just mentioned and I know we've, we've talked. And you did express to me that maybe it wasn't the best of what you were looking for, but it was, it was a good starter. And I know that's saying that it will change for you in the future, but there is that option. You know, that, that is some, definitely some discussions that need to be done. But if you're somewhat, you know, I'm willing to agree with what the last, the last three mentioned just to be as a starting point and then let's see how it rolls in, in, in this near future. And then you know how to reach out to us and maybe, you know, I think I received one letter, but we've spoken on a couple of occasions anyways. So, I'd like to, I guess, get the ball rolling and, and, and see how it goes. And yes, let's, let's keep the door open to discussions in the future, in the near future.
So, at this time now, you have the option to pull this item or we have the option to go ahead and vote?
I'd like you to go ahead and vote and I would be fine with that. I just want to say that I did apply for a regular one in the beginning, like that was my application. And speaking that, I was in no way interested in gambling. I understand the whole problem. I hate the whole problem because it's my problem and it shouldn't be. But I will make this work. My clients are excited about it. I just wish that we could have done it differently, that's all.
I apologize about the emails. I, we'll, we'll look into that. Okay.
So, the motion is to either approve or deny Val's request for a Class F liquor license rehearsed upon at thirty-four oh two West Elmer Street.
Can I have a motion? Alderman Santi?
I would make that motion as presented.
To approve or deny?
To approve.
Okay, seconded?
I'll second.
By Alderman Schaefer.
Discussion? Is there anyone in the public that I'd like to make a public comment regarding this item? Clerk, please call them.
Okay, Alderman Santi?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glenn?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next items on the agenda, C and D, have been pulled for tonight. The applicant has asked to remove these items for consideration. So, next item on the agenda is executive session. Did you want to go to the executive?
No.
Staff reports. Ross?
Go ahead, go ahead. I got a tone. I just, I just wanted to let council know, last September, we reduced impact fees, school impact fees and capital development fees for a reduction period lasting through September twenty-fourth of this year. We've been working with Baxter and Woodman on a capital development fee study. We're finalizing some of those numbers right now. That's going to come up before council for determination, determination of how we want to move forward with what they present to us. So, the goal is to have Baxter and Woodman here within the next couple of meetings to have a kind of a question and answer session. Kind of give us some rough numbers of where those are going to be at. And then we need to make a decision on how we want to move forward with continuing a reduction or going with a full resets fee schedule or whatnot. So, I just want to put that in the back of your mind and that, that will be coming before you shortly. So, could have a pretty good impact on, on development, so. I think that's all I have.
Bill? A couple of things coming up in the next few weeks here will be the Spirit of Forty-five before we begin August eleventh. And it'll be at Baxter's Park. It's always been a, a real nice ceremony for us over the last few years. And then the following weekend after that is Booze Booze Barbecue at Peterson Park on August sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, put on by the Road to Reclo. So, those will be two bigger events that are, I guess, more longstanding events that are coming up. Tomorrow night, actually, National Night Out, the police department will put on an event at Peterson Park. There'll be a number of other police departments there as well as agencies, McHenry County Conservation District. Just a nice night out and that's at Peterson Park. If you haven't been down to the Riverwalk, you can see the Donut Boat. If you haven't seen that, it's at the pier right by, right outside of Buddy's. So, it's finally delivered and put in the water. And as long as you're down there, keep walking down to Miller Point, it's substantially complete. The lighting is not in yet and there's a couple of things that we'll discuss of finishing up, but it really turned out phenomenally. We really are happy with the cooperation with the Riverwalk Foundation on that. And at the next meeting, now that we weren't sure it was going to be done, but now that it is done, we're finalizing an event with the Riverwalk Foundation that we'll bring before you at their next city council meeting, discussing just a smaller event on September fourteenth. That will include a program that has the thirty-six inch fire bulbs that will be in the water. The event is called Light the Night. Our park staff would fill those up with wood. We light them on fire, you know, they burn for probably an hour and a half. But it's basically a, a really nice fire pit over top of the water. So, it'll be a nice event to walk along and view those. All those bulbs are being sponsored by this local businesses, so that's two thousand dollars each. A good, a portion of that money will go back to the Riverwalk Foundation to help fund their future efforts. And then the very last thing that I have is just as a, as a heads up. An event that we're facilitating, it's the infancy, just started talking about it, just trying to work out the details on it, is a large or benefit concert that would be held next summer. It'll be a bigger name band and with the benefits going to local organizations, one of those being us and a, and a splash pad efforts here in town. So, we don't have a lot of details. It'll be at Peterson Park. It'll just be a one-day event, not a festival. As we get more and put more things together, we'll begin next June for that one-day event. Thank you, Bill.
Troy?
The pre-con meeting for the Kern Road Ask Her project as well as the Pearl Street ITF, which is lighting and streetscape project, were attended on Friday, last Friday. Right now, we're looking at August nineteenth start dates for both those projects with advanced notification signage getting put up on the twelfth, so this coming Monday, but after this week. And then road program, we are finalizing the execution of contract document current right now and they'll be starting right around the same time as the Kern Road Ask Her project. They're also the general contractor for that project as well. Lakeland Park, we're finalizing some additional modeling for the detention basin projects and we'll be providing an update of late this month, possibly sometime in September. And that's, that's all I have.
Chief, I feel like I need to say something, right? Everybody else talk. Since our last discussion with council on vape shops, Doug and Ross and I have, have met and we're looking forward to bringing back a, a zoning change along with some restrictions and built into there to the zoning commission first in September, Doug?
Yeah.
And then, so we'll have something back to hopefully by the end of September where we can actually release the moratorium at the same time, have something that council will approve for the change in vape shops as well. That's all I have.
Thank you. That's it? Doug, you want to say something?
You good? I want to welcome Tricia here as a new city clerk. Good job tonight.
Thank you.
It's good to have you. Other than that, I have nothing else. Actually, I do. Troy had their eighth baby. Actually, it's fourth. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. It's the fourth.
Seems like eighth.
It seems like the eighth probably, but congratulations to you and your wife and the family, so.
Is that why you're spending more time here?
That's part of the reason.
I have nothing else. City council comments? Alderman Santi?
Quick observation, spent three nights over the last two weeks at the Knox Park at the softball and also experienced my grandson and one of his, his pool nights. And I, I know the pool is, is very old, but I got to hand it to you, Director Hobson. It just looked, looked really nice and clean, lockers, the pool, everything in that area. Good job by you and your staff.
Thank you.
Any other? Alderman Haddock?
Just want to mention that there will be a finance and personnel committee meeting on August nineteenth at five thirty here.
Thank you. Alderman Schaefer?
I just wanted to mention that today they had a grand opening for Pearl Street.
I just wanted to mention that today they had the grand opening for the Pearl Street Commons over on Richmond and Pearl, and if you haven't had a chance to see that, I know there, Sue and Vic were there today. But that, that turned out extraordinarily nice inside, and it's, it's, I would like to take all the people in my neighborhood there, 'cause it's, I think, finally for what got in there and for all the time and effort that the staff and council and John Colmer did, that we can be very proud of that location and that facility. It was very nice. And it's, it's already full. They've got twenty-one people there now and there's three rooms available. That'll be filled by the end of this month. Outstanding.
And many of them don't have cars, so I've always gotten a lot of calls, like, what's going on here? It looks, just so you do know, that a lot of them, you know, have wheelchairs and they don't have cars, so just.
We do see a lot of them in the neighborhood that are out. Some of them themselves are, they take care of themselves. They're all, there's no assistance there. There is twenty-four-hour security and watch on them, but there's no nursing, there's no assistance. And, and they, they go out and maneuver through town and it's been, you know, a delight so far, so.
Eric, any other council comments? All right, Alderman Glab?
I don't think I've ever done it.
Oh, your motion to adjourn? You gotta go somewhere tonight or what?
Hey, there's a, there's a township meeting, yeah, bus service.
Tonight? Alderman Glab is gonna make the motion to adjourn. Second? Alderman Santti?
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Okay, Alderman Glab?
Yes.
Alderman Santti?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Miller? Miller.
Thank you. I'll get back to all the council on that IT issue as well, just to figure out.